Good morning. We're gonna start now. We have a quorum. I'd ask the guests and visitors to please retire behind the rail. If the members will take their seat, we'll get started with our invocation. And thank you very much. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Giselle Hannah-Stendardo, a member of the Mother Divine Grace Church in the Syrian-American community. She is here today as the guest of Councilman O. I would ask to all guests and visitors to please rise.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Again, my name is Giselle Hannah-Stendardo, and it's a true honor to have been asked by Councilman David O. to give today's invocation as a Syrian-American. We did try to get a clergy member or priest, but they were unable to do so at such short notice, so on behalf of the Syrian community, I am here to do so. So today's prayer is for the refugees and for peace for all the world. So we welcome to you, O God, in a time of great need. Men, women, and children are fleeing for their lives in Syria and many countries in the world. With a desire to reach out to them with your love and care, we come to you. Allow your strength and wisdom to inspire us to provide for them in ways that we may never before imagined were possible. Tug at the hearts of those who enjoy peace and prosperity, to make a way for these suffering people to come to a place of safety and refuge. Inspire us with courage and good planning to make a lasting difference in their lives. Allow these refugees to safely travel in peace. Protect them, dear God in the air, on the seas, and on land, along whatever paths they may take. Grant that all nations dwell together in peace without the threat of war and terrorism. Hovering over them, we place our trust in you, O God. Teach everyone in this room, people of all nations, races, and faiths, all over the world, to believe that the peace that seems so far off is in fact within our reach. Please guide the hands and minds of our councilmen and elected officials here today. Let every child, woman, man live in peace, Creator of all life and love. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those inspiring words. Council ladies? Thank you. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 15, 2015. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 15, 2015 be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 15, 2015. Stand and approve. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. The next order of business is request for leaves of absence. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to welcome and thank everyone who has come down out of their busy day and witnessed their government in action. We really appreciate the fact that you felt enough about democracy and action that you would come down and witness. I hope you enjoyed so much that you actually come back again and see us at another date. Thank you so much. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Denny O'Brien, who will present a resolution recognizing outgoing president of Local 22, Joe Shulley, and their executive board. With Mr. Shulley and those accompanying him, please join the Councilman at the podium.
Today, we proudly recognize the work of the outgoing president of Firefighters Local 22, Joe Shulley, and his team. Together with President Joe Shulley today are Ed Marks, Jerry Cotts, Dan Oaks, Karen Boyle, Jack Eltmann, and the honorary member of the team, former city councilman and now state representative, Ed Nielsen. Joe became president during a very challenging time for our city firefighters. He established himself as an intelligent, thoughtful, and professional leader right from the outset of his term. Joe and his team were professional advocates, and they helped to change the tenure of the conversation, as evidenced by their results and accomplishments. Personally, my staff and I worked hand-in-hand with Local 22 and Joe to refine the vacant property legislation. Due to the comprehensive nature of the bill, Joe initially had his concerns about some of the bill's provisions, but after months and lots of thoughtful and constructive dialogue, we got the legislation to a really good place. Our conversations were of the highest level. He was fully committed to an open and honest process. His professionalism was beyond reproach. We could not have enacted the vacant property ordinance without Joe. All of this is representative of Joe Shulley's leadership style, and our city is a better and safer place because of his leadership. Joe is a personal friend of mine, and in personal conversations, I related that rarely do you have someone of his professionalism as the head of a local. But Joe brought so much more to that office, as we all experienced the loss of our firefighters, and we all grieve for that loss and for the families that experienced that loss. Joe was right there, much like John McNeeseby is at the FOP. He's a very protective, warm cloak around those families. And when we did the vacant property legislation, we drew on that professionalism. And when we talked to him, we said, you know, we think we're maybe eighty, ninety percent there, but because he was a battalion chief and because he knew the operations intimately of the fire department, his purpose was to always to make sure that the firefighters had the necessary resources to protect themselves and protect us as citizens and the public at large. And not only to make sure that the firefighters were protected from injury and death and loss of life, but also that the citizens were protected in every way, whether it was a fire that occurred at their house, a cat up in a tree, getting paramedic services that are critical, and fighting for each and every man and their dignity, man and woman on the fire department, and their dignity. So it was an honor to work with Joe, and I think you can see, looking at the faces of everyone here in city council, we were all grateful for his service to the city and to Local 22. Whereas the International Association of Firefighters, Local 22 represents the city of Philadelphia firefighters and paramedics. Local 22 traces its origin back to 1915, where Philadelphia firemen formed the City Firefighters Association and...
Whereas Local 22 is led by a union president and an executive board. In 2013, Battalion Chief Joseph Shulley became president, and whereas Joe joined the fire department in 1992 and has worked in many companies throughout the city. Through hard work and tenacity, Joe quickly rose through the ranks to the position of Battalion Chief. Throughout his career, Joe has been a staunch supporter of Local 22 and its membership. And whereas a union president needs a good executive board to be successful, Joe's executive board included Vice President Tim McShay, who served the union for many years and recently retired, Vice President Kelvin Fong, who serves as a lieutenant and coordinates the activities for the Hero Thrill Show, Treasurer Thomas McKeernan, who serves as a Battalion Chief's aide and handles all financial aspects of the union, Recording Secretary Michael Bresnan, who is soon to be promoted to Battalion Chief and is tasked with managing the office and keeping records, Chairman of the Trustees, Mike Kane, who was a Battalion Chief, served as a union official for ten years and recently retired, Trustee Edward Marks, currently serving as Vice President and served as a firefighter for thirty-eight years, Trustee Gerald Cotts, who is a retired captain and is currently the longest-tenured member of the executive board, Sergeant-at-Arms Dan Oaks, who is a fire lieutenant and is currently serving as the treasurer of Local 22, Sergeant-at-Arms Michael Conroy, who is an active member of Local 22 and is currently serving as a specially-trained firefighter at the airport, and the president's assistant Karen Boyle. End.
Whereas Joe and the board worked diligently to convene a professional and respectful image, both publicly and privately, when discussing even the most difficult issues with the city administration. And whereas they worked to ensure that no matter how difficult and adversarial the issues became, that there were always ways to remain an open line of communication with all city officials. And whereas through their leadership, these individuals have seen the city's 2,100 firefighters and paramedics through many accomplishments, and whereas they convinced the city administration and the mayor to honor the 2009 contract after three years of court battles. End.
And before the whereas appointed personal privilege, I want to say congratulations in what it is to have an honor of being in city council, to witness the service that Joe Shulley and the entire board and the administration has done under the trying and troubling and most saddest times that the department has ever gone through. We couldn't have been more prouder. There are good leaders, and there are great leaders. And we have behind me and us, and witness here today, a great leader and in a great, great executive board who got through some times that most of us couldn't even think of, couldn't even experience and do not want to experience. And I want to thank them for setting the policies, all right, to keep our community safe moving forward and make sure that the department has a blueprint for all of us to help finish this work. So I want to say thank you, appointed personal privilege, for his service. Whereas, in an effort to save the city of Philadelphia several millions of dollars annually and preserve the health benefits of the city firefighters and paramedics, a change was made from fully insured medical insurance model to a self-insured model. This change saved the city of Philadelphia $3 million in just the first year alone in savings that are projected to continue for the foreseeable future. Whereas, they secured meaningful legislation to ensure that the safety of the citizens of Philadelphia, as well as the safety of our city's firefighters and paramedics, by ensuring a public forum to discuss and review reductions in the fire department before they were instituted. Whereas, they worked closely with the city of Philadelphia and city council to bring to light the decorating conditions of many of the city's fire stations, which led to working closely with the Department of Public Property to identify and prioritize the necessary repairs. End.
And whereas, these leaders brought to light the dangerous conditions of much of the fire department's fleet, and whereas they helped pass legislation to help reduce the risk posed by large vacant properties to both the citizens of our city and the firefighters tasked with responding to these potentially deadly fires. And whereas they addressed serious health and safety concerns related to protecting our first responders and the citizens of Philadelphia during the Ebola scare. End.
Whereas, they worked to have the 2013 Act 111 Interest Arbitration Award issued. This marked the first time in over four years that the city's firefighters and paramedics worked under a current contract. It was also the first interest arbitration award that was not appealed in over fifteen years. Whereas, for the first time, the International Association of Firefighters Local 22 teamed up with Operation Warm and provided over 500 new coats to Philadelphia childrens most in need over a two-year period. And whereas, with the help of several of our Hispanic firefighters, the union participated in multiple benefits and community outreach events directed toward the city's growing Hispanic community. End.
Resolved by the council of the city of Philadelphia that it honors and recognizes Joe Shulley and the members of the executive board on their hard work, accomplishments, and leadership. Mr. President, with your permission, I would like to present President Joe Shulley for remarks.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Shulley for remarks. Mr. Shulley, please give your remarks.
Thank you very much. We are honored and humbled that the Philadelphia City Council has elected to recognize the work of our executive board. I'd like to first thank all of the members of the board for their hard work and sacrifice over the past two years. Everything accomplished by this board was a team effort, and not just by our board members, but by other dedicated members of our local that have put in countless hours to help our firefighters and paramedics. Jack Eltmann, Tony Hudgens, Sean Sullivan, and Greg Marshall, to name a few. As a board, we all know for certain that the glue that binds our union from one president to the next and from one executive board to executive board is the president's executive assistant, Karen Boyle. Her knowledge and loyalty and work ethic is beyond reproach, but her best quality is how deeply she truly cares about our members. I can't imagine how much more difficult our task would have been without her assistance. We also received a lot of support and assistance by many local labor leaders, Pat Oiding, Pete Matthews, and John Dougherty, to name a few. I need to point out that the real people that should be recognized aren't me or any of the other board members, it's our families. They put up with our long hours, our late-night phone calls, and sometimes our really poor attitudes when we finally do get home. Dan's wife Jill and two sons sacrificed many hours without Dad so that they could help our members. Eddie and Jerry could be retired on the beach, but they stay for our betterment, keeping their wives by their sides. And I'm sure that I didn't help any of their home life, as I have boundary issues, calling them all hours of the day or night, whether they're working or not. My family was no exception. My wife and kids put up with a lot, always supporting me. All of our families have been supportive and understanding, and for that, I thank them. I'd like to focus for a moment on the critical role our city council has played in helping us moving forward as a union. There are countless issues that were addressed with your assistance, and please forgive me, as I mentioned just a few. Councilman Jim Kenny and Councilman Bob Heenan and their committees for helping us address serious life safety concerns, not just for our firefighters and paramedics, but for the citizens of Philadelphia, also working with us to address serious quality of life issues affecting our firefighters and paramedics. Councilwoman Cindy Bass for spending two days driving with me to every firehouse in her district to get a firsthand view of the station conditions, taking the time to speak to every single firefighter at these stations. Councilwoman Janie Blackwell for helping us identify the truly needy children in her district and helping us get the winter coats that they so desperately needed. Councilman Curtis Jones and his committee for addressing the Ebola threat, now ensuring that our paramedics are equipped with the best possible protection in the event of any high-risk contagious disease threat, once again, reducing the risk of exposure to not just our firefighters and paramedics and their families, but to all the citizens of Philadelphia. Councilwoman Maria Cionas Sanchez and Councilman Denny O'Brien for including us in their land bank and vacant property legislation that can't help but improve the quality of life for all of Philadelphia and reducing the risk of injury or death to our firefighters. I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Council President Darrell Clark, Councilman Bill Greenlee, and former Councilman Ed Nielsen. When this board took office, there was about a three-foot wall between Local 22 and the city administration. Through their persistence and calmness, they were able to help both sides slowly chip away the wall. It's funny, but in the end, I felt comfortable calling or sitting down with Mayor Nutter, Everett Gillison, and Mike Resnick, and being able to talk honestly about any of the many issues facing us. Of course, not always agreeing, but at least talking and understanding both points of view. We were able to settle an arbitration award that went without appeal for the first time in over fifteen years. This greatly improved relationship certainly would not have been possible without the help of all of city council. I really want to stress the point that every single member of council has helped us over the past two years. Your support, your advice, and your guidance are truly appreciated by all of us, as a board and all of the firefighters and paramedics in Philadelphia. I know that city council is often criticized, but you of all, you all have to be one of the most involved, engaged, and caring city councils that Philadelphia has seen. It was my great honor and privilege to serve with the executive board of the International Association of Firefighters Local 22 and to work hand-in-hand with all of you. Thank you again for this great honor.
Council ladies? Thank you. Our next order of business is communications with the Sergeant-at-Arms. Please deliver the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Thank you. Mr. Decker, would you please read those messages?
To the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4604 and 2307 of the Home Code Charter, I am today transmitting to the council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills, bill numbers 150646, 150648, and 150666. And I am pleased to advise you that on October 20, 2015, I signed all the bills which were passed by council at its session on October 8, 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. You have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Our next, and next order of business will be our introduction of bills and resolutions. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer one bill and one resolution.
Thank you, sir.
An ordinance amending Chapter 12, 2400, of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Towing and Immobilizing A Parked or Abandoned Vehicles," and Chapter 12, 2700, entitled "Permit Parking Districts," by adding new temporary parking permit provisions, penalties, and violations.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And a non-privilege resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration to these convey conditional fees to the city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the 28th ward of the city of Philadelphia.
That will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. Today, I offer and introduce two bills.
Thank you, sir.
An ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of Torresdale Avenue from Linden Avenue to Ron Street.
That bill will be referred to the committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the provision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number 197 by striking from the City Plan Russell Street from Casper Street to Balfour Street.
Refer to committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Tasko.
Mr. President, I offer one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I have one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
An ordinance authorizing Nancy Attractonburg to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk cafe at 1444 South Broad Street.
And that bill will be referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Cionas Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one bill.
Thank you.
An ordinance authorizing the construction of a water main and a pertinent work in a proposed right-of-way required to alleviate unsanitary conditions in a portion of East Fisher's Lane.
Refer to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution honoring the accomplishments of Alex Duty during his time as Executive Director of the Bicycle Coalition of Greater Philadelphia.
That will be on next week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing the dedication of the Sister Francesca Only Education and Technology Center at Holy Family University.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privilege resolution authorizing the creation of a special committee on student loan debt to evaluate the social, economic, and legal impact of offering monetary and other incentives to reduce student loan debt of individuals who are residents of the city.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Bill Number 150162, approved June 18, 2015, entitled "An Ordinance to Adopt a Capital Program for the Six Fiscal Years, 2016 through 2021 Inclusive," as amended by Bill Number 15061, approved October 2015, by adding and revising certain projects, amounts, and sources.
That bill will be referred to committee. And Chair recognizes Councilwoman Rose Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President. I offer one resolution co-sponsored by members Good, Johnson, Bass, and Cionas Sanchez. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Resolution, non-privileged resolution, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A non-privileged resolution calling on Albon Payne to resolve its ongoing labor dispute quickly and peacefully with workers at the Philadelphia International Airport.
And that will be on next week's... And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Morning, Mr. President. One bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
Co-sponsored by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you.
And the Administration.
An ordinance amending Title IX of the Philadelphia Code entitled Businesses, Trades, and Professions to add a chapter requiring individuals with responsibility for determination of evaluation of means and methods used during construction or demolition to provide notification to the city upon becoming aware of a violation of law or a substandard practice that presents a substantial threat of serious bodily injury or damage to property.
And that bill will be referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolution.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance renaming and designating Talentine Community Center located at 1025 through 33 Mifflin Street as the East Passion Community Recreation Center.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration dees conveying conditional fees simple titled to the city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 25th, 31st, and 39th wards of the City of Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one privilege and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Maria Pahil Battle on the occasion of her retirement as Senior Vice President of Public Affairs and Marketing for Keystone First.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration dees conveying conditional fees simple titled to the city on lots or pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 49th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, President. I offer two, uh, privileged resolutions. The first, uh, uh, co-sponsored by Councilman City Bass and the other, uh, by Councilmembers Squilla, Johnson, uh, Jones, Heenan, Cionas Sanchez, Bass, O'Brien, and Reynolds Brown. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution recognizing the Harmony for Peace Foundation for presenting Celebrate Peace for UN70 to commemorate the 70th anniversary of the establishment of the United Nations.
That will be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Thomas Henry Massaro for his dedicated service in providing a free in-depth orientation to newly-elected Philadelphia City Council members to promote good government.
And that will also be on this week's final passes calendar. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions. And our next order of business is reports from committee. And the chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee for a report from the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Rules reports three bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Rules, to which is referred Bill Number 150374 entitled "An Ordinance Establishing a Neighborhood Improvement District in the Area Generally Bound by and Including 11th Street to the West, Fulver Street to the North, H Street to the East, and Market Street to the South, with the exception of certain condominium units at 801 Market Street Condominium not included in the district, to be known as the Gallery Neighborhood Improvement District, Designating Gallery Neighborhood Improvement District Corporation, a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation, as the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district." And Bill Number 150499 entitled "An Ordinance Amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning to Provide Fair Notice to be Given to the Director of Commerce in Connection with Certain Zoning and Planning Applications for Permits, Approvals, and Variances." And Bill Number 150645 entitled "An Ordinance Amending Chapter 14, 300 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Administration and Procedures to Add Requirements Relating to the Recording of Survey Plans and Final Plats, All Under Certain Terms and Conditions. Respectful Reports, it has considered the same and returns the attached bills to Council with a favorable recommendation."
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Numbers 150374, 150499, and 150645.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 150374, 150499, and 150645. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And these bills will be on our first reading calendar at our next session today. Uh, we will now have consideration of calendar. And I note that the bills just reported from committee have been deemed to have had a first reading. They will be on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. As there are additional bills on the first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Councilman Jones for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the final passes calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from second reading and final passes calendars today. Numbers 150756, 150776, 150407, 150646, 140056, 150612, and 150009. All of the resolutions and bills are being held.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, before considering the bills and resolutions on our final passes calendar, uh, we will have our public comment session. The public comment session will go as follows. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or resolution that is on a final passes calendar today, if you have not already done so, uh, I'd ask that you sign up at the table to my left. Um, when your name is called, uh, you will go to the podium in the middle of the council chambers. There's a device, and that device has a green light. When that light turns green, it is your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you have thirty seconds to conclude your remarks. And when the light turns red, uh, we'd ask that you please adhere to the guidelines and conclude your remarks. You will be given three minutes to testify. Mr. Decker, will you please call the first name?
There are no speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. It's good to always stay in practice. And we will now consider the resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passes calendar. And I ask, Mr. Decker, if you will please read the title of 150756.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration dees conveying conditional fees simple titled to the city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 4th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
And Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it? And Resolution 150756 has been adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 150776.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration dees conveying conditional fees simple titled to the city on lots or pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 7th, 19th, 37th, and 42nd wards of the City of Philadelphia.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Cionas Sanchez.
Thank you. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it? And Resolution 150776 is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 150407.
An ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 253 by striking from the City Plan and vacating Kerper Place from Kerper Street to its terminus as a cul-de-sac turnaround northeastwardly therefrom.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Tasko.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Bill Number 150407 be placed on the suspension calendar.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second that Bill Number 150407 be placed on the suspension calendar. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it? Bill Number 150407 will be placed on the suspension calendar. Mr. Decker, 150646.
An ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Numbers 120 and 121 within an area bounded by Jefferson Street, 24th Street, Oxford Street, and 22nd Street by placing on the City Plan Bucknell Street from Oxford Street to Jefferson Street.
It's been moved and probably se-- I'm sorry. This bill has been placed on two consecutive days. Uh, the question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Good. Councilman Greenlee. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Brien. Councilman O'Neil. Councilman O. Councilwoman Cionas Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilwoman Tasko. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes of fourteen and ayes of zero. Majority of members present voting affirm that the bill passes. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, I just want to go on the record, uh, as I momentarily stepped away from my desk being recorded as aye on the votes, uh, prior to my return. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. The record shall reflect that Councilman Heenan has voted aye on all bills and resolutions during his absence. Mr. Decker, 14056.
An ordinance amending Chapter 2300 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Compensation and Benefits by providing for the salary of the majority deputy whip of council.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Good. Councilman Greenlee. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Brien. Councilman O'Neil. Councilman O. Councilwoman Cionas Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilwoman Tasko. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes of fifteen and ayes of zero. Majority of members present voting affirm that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 150612.
An ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2016 within the General Fund from the City Council to the Director of Finance contribution to school district.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Good. Councilman Greenlee. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Brien. Councilman O'Neil. Councilman O. Councilwoman Cionas Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilwoman Tasko. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes of fifteen and ayes of zero. Majority of members present voting affirm that the bill passes. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was temporarily off the floor, and I would like to be recorded in the affirmative on, uh, ordinance 150646.
Thank you, Councilman. The record shall reflect that. Mr. Decker, 15009.
An ordinance amending Title 21 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Miscellaneous by establishing a policy of posting all missing and endangered persons' alerts on city websites and social media sites.
Thank you. This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Good. Councilman Greenlee. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Brien. Councilman O'Neil. Councilman O. Councilwoman Cionas Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Council, Councilman Squilla. Councilwoman Tasko. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes of fifteen and ayes of zero. Majority of members present voting affirm that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month introduced by Councilwoman Tasko.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Tasko. Second? Thank you. It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it? And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring the accomplishments of Alex Doty during his time as Executive Director of the Bicycle Coalition of Greater Philadelphia introduced by Councilman O'Brien.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Rose Brown. Oh, he said O'Brien? I'm sorry. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it? And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing the dedication of the Sister Francesca Only Education and Technology Center at Holy Family University introduced by Councilman O'Brien.
Chair again recognizes Councilman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it? And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Maria Pahil Battle on the occasion of her retirement as Senior Vice President of Public Affairs and Marketing for Keystone First introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it? And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing the Harmony for Peace Foundation and presenting Celebrate Peace for UN70 to commemorate the 70th anniversary of the establishment of the United Nations introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it? And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Thomas Henry Massaro for his dedicated service in providing a free in-depth orientation to newly-elected Philadelphia City Council members to promote good government introduced by Councilman O.
Chair again recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it? And that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Are there any speeches on the part of the minority today? Any speeches on the part of the majority? Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two and a half years ago, at 22nd and Market, there was a building collapse. It resulted in the loss of six lives, two of them from the 4th Councilmatic District. You started immediately by appointing a committee to look at the catastrophe to see what we as legislators could do to prevent that kind of catastrophe again. I recall myself, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Heenan, Councilwoman Sanchez, and former Councilman Kenny were a part of that committee. We came up with seventy-five recommendations to hold ourselves as a city accountable, to raise a standard of construction and deconstruction of buildings in the City of Philadelphia. Well, as we watched the trial this week, two people were convicted, the operator of the crane and the minority owner of the construction company. And when the prosecution stopped, the architect that saw the danger and said nothing was not held to task, and the owner of the building who had the property and most to gain by it being torn down were not prosecuted. A gentleman in my barber shop said to me in plain English, and I translate, "Councilman, what part of the game is that? I would say to you that everyone should be held accountable for what they do." And the bill that I introduced today will begin that process. And it's simply common sense. If you see something, say something. You have a responsibility as a professional architect. Who then said, well, when asked and questioned, "Did you know that this building could be a catastrophe?" He said, "Well, yes." He said, "Did you say something? I said it to the owner." "Well, why didn't you say it to the City of Philadelphia? Because I don't work for them." Well, that's of little comfort to the people who perished in that building. So from now on, your architect, as you go for your professional license, you need to see something, say something. Because we will come after your professional license. We will hold you accountable. It won't just be the low-paid worker or the minority company. It goes all the way up the food chain to the owner. And in the City of Philadelphia, we need to hold all people accountable under one standard. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. And again, I want to commend the committee on the great work that they did and a series of recommendations, and hopefully we will be fully implementing all of those recommendations over the next term. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Immediately following City Council today, USA 250 will hold a briefing. And, uh, this group is led by some of our city's most promising, uh, leaders who are going to be running things tomorrow, uh, including Ms. Nikki Allen White. So we're inviting all of the millennials and those who care about millennials and our next generation of leadership to join us this afternoon, USA 250 and Gen 250 Committee for a Special State of Young Philly Lunch Briefing. What we know is that today's second graders will graduate in 2026. So we have a lot to do as, as we prepare this next generation of leaders. And we want to learn how a diverse set of regional institutions, what they will be doing to launch the planning process for USA 250. Lunch will be provided. If you did not RSVP in, in advance, then, um, you, you'll have to purchase your catered lunch. But we welcome the input and intellect of those who care about, uh, USA 250. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Councilwoman. There appears to be no additional speeches, so the chair again recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for a motion to adjourn.
Yes, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, October 29th, 2015 at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second that council stand adjourned. So Thursday, October 29th, 2015, 10:00 a.m. All those in favor? Those opposed? Aye. Ayes have it. Thank you all very much.